Please rise ladies and gentlemen. The 16th Sangguniang Panlalawigan is now convened for its 16th regular session. The Honorable Vice Governor Adeline M. Angeles presiding.
The 16th regular session of the 16th Sangguniang Panlalawigan of this province is no call to order. Requesting Honorable Mercy Rihano to kindly plead the invocation to be followed by national anthem. Maraming maraming salamat po sa mga biyaya'y pinagkakaluom sa amin sa araw-araw. Lalo't higit ay ang biyaya ng buhay. Sa pakakataong ito, Panginoon, kami nagkakatipon dito sa aming silid pulungan. At ang sinawa ay kami ay patnubayan mo ikaumpumagit na sa amin para kami ay bigyan mo ng mga matatag na kaisip na, matatag na kaluoban at mga maayos na kaisipan. Ito po ay matalakay namin ang lahat ng aming mga agenda para sa ikabubuti at madaling pagpadaloy. Para ito ay aming may pagserbisyo sa aming mamamayan ng Marinduke. Ang lahat po ng ito, Panginoon, ay hinihiling namin sa pangalan ng iyong anak na si Jesus at ang kanyang inana si Santa Maria. Amen. Luwalhati sa Ama, sa Anak at sa Espirito Santo. Ngayon magpakailan mat mapasawalang hanggang amen. Sa ngalan ng Ama, ng Anak na Espirito Santo, amen. Mr. Secretary kindly call the roll.
Honorable Mark Julius P. Caballes, Honorable Aurelio J. Leva III, Honorable Antonio El Mangkukang III, Honorable Bernardin E. Ophizmercado, Honorable Melgabar Arincabo, Honorable Mercedes Rihano, Honorable Danilo Arred, Honorable Ishmael D. Pilim, Honorable Jose Neril El Mangol, Honorable Valdomero El Limpiada, Honorable Loren Rosales.
Present.
Madam Presiding Officer, with six members of the board present, we have the necessary coro for this morning session.
With the presence of coro, we can now proceed with the order of business. Yes, our Honorable Floor Leader.
Thank you very much, Madam Presiding Officer. For the reading and adoption of the minutes of the preview session, may I move that we dispense with the reading of the minutes of the session dated October 21, 2022 and consider the same as having been read without prejudice to the corrections, clarification, and amendments for members of the board. I saw move.
There's a motion by the Majority Floor Leader Julie II dead. Is there any objection? The Chair hears none, the motion is approved.
Inviting members of the board who have some corrections, clarifications, and amendments to the minutes of the preview session.
Is there anybody with correction? Seems nobody wants to manifest. What is not the pleasure of the floor leader?
Madam Presiding Officer, may I move that we approve the minutes of the 15th regular session of the 16th Sangguniang Panlalawigan dated October 21, 2022. I saw move.
Is there any second to the motion of the floor leader Julie II dead by Honorable Ophiz? Any objection? The Chair hears none. The minutes of the 15th regular session of the Sangguniang Panlalawigan dated October 21, 2022 is now approved.
For the matters arising from the minutes, inviting members of the board who have some matters arising from the previously adopted minutes.
Anybody from the floor with matters arising? What is not the pleasure of the floor leader?
We now go to the approval amendment of the agenda. For today's agenda, we have two privileged speeches to be rendered by the Honorable Vice Governor and Honorable Bernardin E. Ophizmercado. We don't have any question hour for the messages and correspondence from the Governor. We have three items for the communications and petitions. We have three items. We don't have any more municipal ordinance for the review of the board. For the proposed first reading and referral of the committees of proposed ordinance, we don't have any. For the proposed resolution, we have two proposed resolutions. We have two proposed committee reports. And we have one item for the business for the day. Madam Presiding Officer, move for the approval of today's agenda.
Before that, the Presiding Officer wish to request the indulgence of the body. This representation is still waiting for an important document that will form part of my privileged speech. Does I request reconsideration that it be deleted from the order of business? As well as the committee report of the Oversight Committee.
Likewise, Madam Presiding Officer, the Honorable Danilo Red would like to express his intention to seek some clarificatory questions for the privileged speech of the Honorable Bernardin E. Ophizmercado.
Noted. Yes, noted in the order of business, Honorable Floor Leader.
He would like to ask that he would also render some manifestation after the privileged speech of Honorable Bernardin Ophizmercado.
You're referring to Honorable Red?
Red, yes.
Okay, that's noted. So the speech corollary to the privileged speech of Honorable Ophiz is now included in the... It's now being proposed to be included?
So Madam Presiding Officer, I move that we approve today's agenda as amended.
There is a motion from the floor leader for the approval of today's agenda with amendment Julie II dead by Honorable Mangol. Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. Today's agenda is now approved with amendment.
For the privilege hour, Madam Presiding Officer, may I ask that we recognize the gentle lady from Bwak for her privileged speech.
The gentle lady from Bwak, who is very always inspired to render a privileged speech, is now recognized. Honorable Dindin Ophiz.
Thank you, Honorable Majority Floor Leader and Honorable Vice Governor, Lynn Angeles. Isang maulang umaga po sa ating mga ginagalang na board members at sa ating pinagpipitaga ng busy gubernador na lalawigan. Huli ko po hinihili ang inyong pahintulot na tumayo sa inyong harapan para sa isang privilehiyong pananalita. Una po ay nais kong pasalamatan ang ating mahal na Congressman Lord Alan Bilasco dahil isa sa naging prioridad niya ay maapondohan ang proyekto ng river dike kontrol sa mga barangay na matagal lang nananalangin na magkaroon ito upang masiguro ang kaligtasan ng mamamayan tuwing panahon ng bagyo na kunsaan kapag ang ating ilog ay tumataas ang tubig. Ay umaabot sa mga kabahayanan at kayang maanod ang bahay na gawa sa light materials na nakatayo sa may gilid ng ilog at kahit ang tao ay pwedeng maluno dulot ang malakas na agos ng tubig. Subalit ang nakakalungkot po dito sa nasabing mga proyekto na dike na gawa ng ilang contractors ay masasabi nating hindi maayos o matibay ang pagkakagawa. Sa katunayan, ang mga ilang river dike ay agad nasira pagkalipas lang ng ilang buwan o taon. Hanggang sa ngayon ay hindi na inabalikan ang mga contractors para muling ayusin ito at dahilan ito para muling malagay sa peligro ang buhay ng ating mga kababayan kunsa kaling magkaroon ng bagyo at malakihang pagbaha. Ayon sa Republic Act 9 to 8 for contract and warranties under Article 19, Section 62 on warranty for the procurement of goods in order to assure that manufacturing defect shall be corrected by the supplier, manufacturer, or distributor as the case may be for a specific time. After performance of the contract, a warrant shall be required from the contract awardee for such period of time as may be provided in the IRR. The obligation for which shall be covered by either retention money in the amount equivalent to a percentage of the total contract price to be provided in the IRR. The said amount shall only be released after the lapse of the warranty period provided that the goods supplied are free from defects and all the conditions imposed under the contract have been fully met. B, for the procurement of infrastructure projects, the contractor shall assume full responsibility for the contract work from the time project construction commence up to a reasonable period as defined in the IRR taking into consideration the scale and coverage of the project from its final acceptance by the government and shall be held responsible for any damage or construction of work except those occasioned by force majeure. The contractor shall be fully responsible for the safety, protection, security, and convenience of his personnel, third parties, and the public at large as well as the works equipment, installation, and the like warranty security in the form of cash, bank guarantee, letter of credit, government service insurance system bank, or callable surety bank. The contractor shall undertake the repair works at his own expense of any defect or damage to the infrastructure projects on account of the use of materials of inferior quality within 90 days from the time the head of the procuring entity has issued an order to under-repair. In case of failure or refusal to comply with this mandate, the government shall undertake such repair works and shall be entitled to full reimbursement of expenses incurred thereon upon demand. At basis of Presidential Decree Number 159 for Section 7, responsibility of the contractor. The contractor shall assume full responsibility for the contract work until its final acceptance by the government and shall be held responsible for any damage or destruction of works except those occasioned by force majeure. Except likewise for force majeure, the contractor shall be fully responsible for the safety, protection, security, and convenience of his personnel, third parties, and the public at large as well as the works equipment installation and the like to be affected by his construction work. Mali naong na nakasaad dito na kunsa ko pa ng warranty period, may dapat i-repair ng contractor ang anumang sira o depektong na ginawang proyekto mula sa sarili nilang pera at ang sinumang hindi makakumplay ay pinagbabawalan ng sumali muli sa anumang public bidding ng pamalaan. Kaugnay nito ay nais kong idulog ang nasabing usapin sa committee ng infrastructure upang maipatawag ang DPWH kasama ang contractors na depektibo ang gawang proyekto na sakasulukuyan ay hindi pa rin nagakumplay at kung ano na baga ang status ng mga nasirang dike. Ating alamin kung ano po ang kanilang pananagutan dahil hindi sila kumikilos upang isaayos ang mga nasirang dike na kanilang ginawa hanggang sa napaglipasan na ng warranty period. Sino ngayon ang inaasahan nating magre-repair ng dike na nasira? Kumuha po tayo ng talaan sa PDRRMO ng mga barangays na nasira ang dike at hanggang ngayon ay hindi pa binabalikan upang maisaayos. Sa bayan ng buwa, mataas na bayan, katubukan, banban, daig, buton, mainit, ugbak, bantay, binunga, at maligaya. Sa bayan ng mugpog, sumanga, at malusak. Sa bayan ng gasan, masiga. Sa Buenavista, kaigangan at kaigangan. Maraming salamat po at panalanging ko ay magkaroon ng magandang kasabutan sa mga susunod na mga araw dahil nakakaranas na tayo ulit ng malakas na buhos ng ulan na magdudulot ng malakihang pagbaha. Marami po ang salamat.
Maraming salamat, Honorable Dindin Ophiz sa Mercado. I think there is a corollary speech to be rendered by Honorable Danny Red in relation to the same subject matter.
Magandang umaga po sa ating Vice Governor, sa ating mga kagalanggalang na mga bukal, sa ating pong sekretariat. Isang magandang umaga po sa inyong lahat. Nakita ko po ang privileged speech ng ating pong kagalanggalang na bukal, Bernardin Ophiz. At nais ko po sana na dugtungan 'yung kanya pong privileged speech. Ako po ay walang hinanda na kopya pero ito po ay para rin matalakay. Ang mga bagay dapat po napakaimportante rin po na dapat matalakay sa ating pong ipatatawag na committee meeting. Ito po ay tungkol sa ating pong mga National Road, Madam Presiding Officer, mga kasama. Dahil napapansin po ko po at siguro po ay napapansin din ang kagalanggalang na bukal ng pangalwang distrito na nandito ngayon eh bukal Merci Rihano na lubhang napakadelikado po talaga ng mga kalsada papunta po sa Bayan ng Santa Cruz. Kahit po sa bayan ng... kahit saan bayan po, sa buong Lalawigan. Napapansin niyo po ba, Madam Presiding Officer, mga kasama, na marami po tayong mga proyekto dyan na ginagawa? Maraming salamat po sa kagalanggalang na ating pong Congressman Lord Alan Bilasco, sa atin din po sa ating pong gubernador. Nagpapasalamat po ako sa kanilang mga proyekto na binibigay sa ating Lalawigan. Subalit, hindi ko po maintindihan kung ang mga kalsada sa National Road ay ito po ba ay under ng maintenance o ng contractor na antagal-tagal na po nakatiwangwang ng mga ginagawa nilang re-blocking. Re-blocking po nasadyang napakadelikado sa mga likuan na talaga namang papaano kung mabilis ang takbo ng galing sa Santa Cruz pababa. Ay ito namang ng galing namang po sa bayan ng mugpog napataas naman ay talagang mabilis din ang kanyang patakbo na sasakyan dahil pakiat namang po ang sasakyan na ito ay minsan magkasalbung na ay medyo delikado po talaga sa mga sa ating pong mga sasakyan, sa ating pong mga kababayan. Ang naisip ko po sa pagsasalita kong ito, kailan po tayo kikilos? Kung kailan may nadisgrasya na? Kaya ngayon pong umagang ito, inilad ko ang aking ang privilehiyo upang ito po ay maisama sa mga dapat talakayin sa meeting po. Naipapatawag ni bukal Dindin Ophiz at ng ito po ay mabigyan ng solusyon dahil nakikita ko po marami talaga ang re-blocking na madadaan ang papunta sa Santa Cruz. Sikip na po ang kalsada ay talaga pong dapat ito ay matalakay kung ito po ba ay under ng maintenance o ng contractor. Kinakailangan po ang sa akin lang po dito, kapag binutas nila o winasak 'yung kalsada ng mga contractor, dapat ay iprepay nila kaagad at ito ay mabuhusan kaagad upang hindi masyadong matagal na nakatingwangwang ang kalsada at ng ito ay magamit kaagad. Yun lamang po, Madam Presiding Officer, ang aking nais iparating sa inyong lahat. Magandang umaga po, muli.
Maraming salamat, Honorable Red. The Honorable Gentleman from Bwak, Honorable Caballes, is recognized to render the joint committee report.
Thank you po Madam Chair. Committee Report Number 54-2022, Joint Committee on Appropriations and Committee on Public Works, Infrastructure, Urban Planning and Development. The Joint Committee on Appropriations and the Committee on Public Works, Infrastructure, Land Use and Urban Planning and Development held the joint committee hearing October 19, 2022 with some resource persons to discuss various items referred to the joint committee and the result of which is hereby being presented at Sangguniang Panlalawigan for consideration and legislative action. Based there from the joint committee hereby recommends the following: To approve the request of the Governor for supplemental appropriation the amount of 15,591,000 pesos intended for the purchase of lots for the capital expansion with a total land area of 31,902 square meters equivalent to 500 pesos per square meter. Number two, to approve the request of the Governor for supplemental budget amounting to 9 million, 16,560 pesos intended for the purchase of lots for the airport expansion with a total land area of 50,092 square meters equivalent to 500 pesos per square meter. Number three, to approve the request of the Governor for supplemental budget in the amount of 11,887,550 pesos intended for the purchase of the lots of the proposed maniwaya circumferential road with the area of land to be purchased at of 277.3637 hectares. And additionally, Letter A, to request the DPWH to submit a program of works to the particular details on the road right-of-way being the partner of the PGM on implementation of the proposed maniwaya circumferential road project. Letter B, to send a letter to the DPWH asking whether is it possible to convert the national road to provincial road in its legal basis. And Letter C, to convert the maniwaya circumferential road to provincial road upon project implementation if possible. Number four, to approve the request of the Governor for supplemental appropriation the amount of 17 million for the creation of a master plan for the province of Marinduke subject to the availability of funds. The final recommendations are as follows: To adopt the following resolutions to it: Number one, a resolution appropriating the amount of 15,591,000 under the Provincial Governor's Office intended for the purchase of lots for the capital expansion with a total land area of 31,902 square meters equivalent to 500 pesos per square meter. Number two, a resolution appropriating the amount of 9,016,560 pesos under the Provincial Governor's Office intended for the purchase of lot for the airport expansion with a total land area of 50,092 square meters equivalent to 500 pesos per square meter. Number three, a resolution appropriating the amount of 11,887,550 pesos under the Provincial Governor's Office intended for the purchase of lots for the proposed maniwaya circumferential road with the area of land to be purchased of 277.3637 hectares. And number four, a resolution appropriating the amount 17 million for the creation of a master plan for the province of Marinduke subject to the availability of funds. Respectfully submitted, here truly the Chairperson of the Committee on Appropriations, Bukal Aurelio Leva III, Chairperson of the Committee on Infrastructure and a member of the Committee on Appropriations, Vice Bukal Ishmael Lim, Vice Chairperson of the Committee on Appropriations, Bukal Danny Red, Vice Chairperson of the Committee on Infrastructure, Bukal Loren Rosales, Member of the Committee on Appropriations, Bukal Melgabar Incabo, Bukal Valdomero Limpiada, and also present for Bukal Jose Neril Mangol. Of course, concurred by our Presiding Officer.
Before we further recognize Honorable Caballes, just additional clarification. During po ba sa committee report na clarify one, kung bakit hindi siya nabigyan noting that these are all national projects, national government projects? that these are all national projects, national government projects, the airport and the Maniwaya Circumferential Road and madadagdagan pa po ulat nung Tourism Road going to wildlife sanctuary, na pag-usapan po ba during the hearing, ah kung bakit hindi nalagyan ng allocation for the purchase of land and ikalawa po, what will be the ah ownership status of the 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 road kapag siya po ay tapos na? Can we consider that as partly partly property of the provincial government?
Ah Madam-
Honorable Caballes and Honorable Leva.
Ah Madam Presiding Officer, ah that question or query was brought up insofar as the ah the airport is concerned po, ah I think ah Tony Fernandez clarified that ah while the while the province is waiting for funding from ah the national government, I think they need the money for right now to start the expropriation proceedings. And the concern, an additional concern would be that ah Tony Fernandez mentioned that ah while it is ideal that it is also the national government that should fund the expropriation proceedings, ah he said that ah there is no, I think assurance yet that those are included in the appropriation but insofar as the because ah the question of ownership might come into play later because the airport would be ah operated by a national agency and not by the province. So yun po.
Thank you, Honorable Caballes, Honorable Leva.
Ah I am a member of the committee. Actually, I am, I am also a co-chair of the committee. But as I try to understand, ah now item number four, item number three should be for further meeting with the DPWH to clarify if the circumferential road, if completed, will be transferred to the provincial government. Actually, because they are claiming, according to the resource persons that we had, they are claiming that the DPWH has no fund for road right-of-way. So we want to clarify if really indeed there is no fund and if if there will be no fund and if the road right-of-way will be funded, then if that road ah to be completed or to be constructed will be transferred or will be categorized as provincial road. So I was made to understand na yung item number three, I prefer their study. So we will have another meeting with the DPWH to clarify as what is being manifested there in item number three of the findings. And another thing is, doon namang sa airport, actually, what is being asked only is fifteen percent to be funded out of the twenty percent development fund. Baka po ito ay, kasi yun po yung bili na bili ni Mamiriam na kung maari do'po yoong sa sa airport ay manggaling sa twenty percent. Ang sabi namang po ni Attorney Fernandez, ang kailangan lang niya talaga to have that right-of-way ay fifteen percent. So ang priority po do'sa nine million ay fifteen percent. So I would suggest na it be amended, a resolution appropriating the amount of nine million hundred of which, kung ilan man yung fifteen percent, shall be funded out of the twenty percent development fund. Ang sabi namang po ni Mam Maria Noon, ay meron namang silang pagkukunan kung may habol pa naman nila yoong fifteen percent. Ang kailang-kailangan, ang sabi nga niya ay meron talagang pundo ang DOTR pero sa ngayon ay kailangan ng ma-acquire 'yung lot. So parang nag-invest lang tayo ng fifteen percent, talagang mawawala na talaga 'yung fifteen percent na yun pero yun namang amount of investment of almost seven hundred million ay malaki naman sa atin. Pero yung sa do'sa Maniwaya, ay nikakaisa naman ang resource persons, ang committee na dapat ma-clarify, ma-clarify kung itubag ang kalsada ng ito pagkatapos sa magawa ng DPWH, itubaga ay magiging provincial road. Kasi kung ito ay magiging national road, supposedly ay dapat ay sila lahat ang gumastos even for the sa road right-of-way. Kaya sana po do'sa pangatlo ay magka meron po uli kita ng sunod na pagpupulong at yung pangalwa naman ay ah duxungan natin na yung amount of equivalent to fifteen percent. If that is amenable to the chair of the committee.
Okay, is the reporting committee chair, Honorable Caballes, amenable to the two amendments being introduced by Honorable Leva?
Madam Chair.
First, please with regard to number two for the inclusion of the phrase of which fifteen percent will be funded out of the twenty percent development fund? Yes, and yes, Honorable, is it connected, Honorable Red? Okay, yes, Honorable Red.
Ah Madam Presiding Officer, ah nabanggit ko nung ah I am a member of ah Committee of Infra, Infra and ah also a member of ah Committee on Appropriation, ah Madam Presiding Officer. Ah nandun din po ako sa meeting at ah nung tinalakay na po ang item number three, dito po sa Maniwaya, ay marami daw po di umano ang nagdodonate ng lupa.
Donate.
So, ang tanong ko sa kanila, yung eleven million ba na atin pong ah atin pong pinupunduan ay to the whole ano ah project nung nung circumferential road? Kasi po kung marami ang nagdodonate, ay dapat papinmahap po kaagad nila do'sa mga nagdodonate, yung mga willing na magdonate. Dahil nabanggit ko po do na ito po ay pera, Madam Presiding Officer, na kapag nagkaroon na ng bayaran, baka itong nagdodonate na ito ay bigla na lang magbagong pag-iisip nila at sila ay kumuha na rin ng ng kaukulang kabayaran do'sa kanilang lupa, ah Madam Chair. Kaya ah dapat po na masigurado muna ang dapat nating maibayad o kung sino talaga lang ang babayaran natin ah before the approval of this ah amount, ah Madam Presiding Officer.
So are you requesting a reconsideration that the landowners be finalized first before before the proper resolution of authority?
Yun po ang request ko sa sa mga panahuin nung ah committee meeting, Madam Presiding Officer, dahil baka mamaya yung yung atin pong ina-appropriate na pundo ay kulangin kapag ah nagbabayaran na. Baka mamaya yung iba ay hindi pumayag na sila ay wala ring kaukulang bayad, ah Madam Chair, thank you.
So what is now the pleasure of ah the reporting committee chair? Will you be willing to ah consider the ah request for reconsiderations for amendments by two board members?
Ah yes po Madam Chair, actually, yung mga matters po na raised po ni both by Bukal Jojo Leva and Bukal Danny Red were ah were what we arrived at during the committee hearings, I think ah. So medyo magulo po 'yung committee hearing na yun, kaya I think hindi po, na nagkalituhan din po kami kung saan, kung alin ako nun sa twenty percent development fund, alin yun sa general fund at pero tama po yung suggestions, ah kumbaga parang hindi lang po-
For the number three, so shall we defer the discussion on item number three?
Yes po.
Okay, pending the submission of the documents with regard to the landowners involved and second clarification from DPWH with regard to the status of would be ownership if ever. Tama rin po yun kasi po kailangan po nating mai-record all the investments that the proven that the province will have ay nire-record po na magiging assets. Ngayon po, kung tayo'y bibili ng lupa pagkatapos ginawa 'yung road, kung hindi po siya provincial road, hindi po natin siya malalagay as asset kung siya ay Tourism Road ng national government. So maybe ika-clarify lang po siguro rin yun kasi baka po hanapin din yun pagdating ng panahon ah or or questionin bakit natin pinuduan? Because like ah sa lahat ng mga national projects, parang in parang in the past hindi po tayo masyado nag-fund ng ng purchase ng national roads, like in Dalusong Datung, lahat ay provided. Yung mga national roads, na diversion roads, ah the DPWH paid for the amount, ah medyo hindi ko, baka nakalimutan nila ito. We we understand that time is of the essence pero maganda lang po na maklarify. So what will be the final revision po do'sa? But with regard to item number two, okay lang po sa at sa reporting committee chair ba na ang amendment lang will just be the inclusion of the phrase?
Ah yes po Madam Chair, yun po yung ah like I said earlier, ah yun po yung talagang recommendation of committee during the committee hearings, I think baka-
So accepted po yung recommendation ni Bukal Jojo. But with regard to item three, what will now be the final recommendation from the committee?
Further study?
Ah to defer the approval of the said request and ah-
With regard to item, item number three?
Yes po.
But with regard to the two items, ah are you pursuing po the recommendation already?
Yes po, Madam Chair.
Recognizing the presence of Honorable Lim?
Ano nga yun, Amnesty Day?
Amnesty eh?
Amnesty Day.
Amnesty, oh for now po, just for now, baga mad may agreement tayo na kapag approved na ang agenda, ay considered late na po, but in consideration and may typhoon naman, then will be more lenient and everybody who'll come. Even if late will be considered. So sige po. So ah what is now the pleasure of Honorable Caballes?
Ah Madam Chair, ah would like to, this representation as a as a chairperson of the committee on appropriation, ah moves that ah recommendations that the committee report number fifty-four dash twenty-two be adopted subject to the proposed amendments specifically to items number two and number three of ah the said committee report, Madam Chair.
Do I understand it correctly that with regard to number three, the final recommendation to approve ang na-defer lang, but with regard to the actions to be taken, like the ah sending of na-
It would still push through?
Will push through, okay. So that is for the guidance of the secretary.
And additionally po, Madam Chair, ah-
Yes, Honorable Caballes.
I think it is also important to include the or specify the source of fund that was, I think it is included naman during the, in the minutes of the said committee hearing. Ah it was also tackled and clarified with a budget officer.
Okay, ah thank you, Honorable Caballes. Is there any other, there is a motion from the from the reporting committee chair on behalf of the joint committees for the adoption of the amended committee report as rendered? Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The committee report as rend, as the amended committee report as rendered is now adopted. Just in relation to that, ah nakita lang natin na marami tayong initiatives for expropriation, buying of lots for different projects and at the same time, ah negotiations are ongoing. Maybe the proper committee, I do not know, ano, I mention ko na rin naman po ito sa presiding, as a governor, maybe mas makakatulong then if there will be a negotiating team. Kasi siyempre, ah these are very sensitive things, kapag medyo natuloy ang expropriation, some people may may be offended and baka makatulong then kung team ang makikipag-negotiate sa different persons, like maybe a representative from the Sangguyang Pandalawigan may sit in the negotiating team and maybe that is something that we can, we can do, the creation of a team in charge of the negotiations, of course, to be headed by the ano, by the executive.
We now go to the calendar of business. What, we don't have any unfinished business for the first item in the business for the day. May I ask the secretary to please read proposed ordinance number sixteen dash fourteen?
Proposed ordinance number sixteen dash fourteen entitled, an ordinance establishing the saklolo at gabay sa ina at pamilya or sagip program in the province of Marinduke providing for the source of funds and for other related purposes authored by Honorable Bernardin Office Mercado, chairperson of the committee on women, family and welfare and gender development, co-authored by Honorable Mercedes Ariano, chairperson of the committee on social services.
Madam Presiding Officer, may I ask that we recognize the chairperson of the sponsoring committee, the chairperson of the committee on social service, Honorable Mercedes Ariano.
Honorable, Honorable Rehano unto which this item ah was referred is recognized. Section one titled, this ordinance shall be known as an ordinance establishing- Okay, ah with regard to to this item, the period of interpolation is now open and debate is now open. Yes, any, any amendment? We are now on second reading. Yes, Honorable Leva?
Ah may I move that the section one be amended as follows, instead of a title, a short title, this ordinance shall be known as the Sagip Program Ordinance of Twenty-Twenty-Two of the Province of Marinduke. Sagip Program Ordinance of Twenty-Twenty-Two of the Province of Marinduke. So that it will read, this ordinance shall be known as Sagip Program Ordinance of Twenty-Twenty-Two of the Province of- of the Province of Marinduke." Is that acceptable to the distinguished sponsor?
That is, uh, uh, an amendment to the title.
An amendment to the title, and it shall not, it shall not be called short title?
Is the, are, are the, uh, spons, is the sponsoring committee to the chair amenable to, to amend the title?
May I ask both of the, the authors?
No, no, not all?
The Honorable, uh, Chair, are you all ready that the...
Yes, uh...
Yes, Bokal Honorable Mercy. Before anything else, I would like to manifest that during the committee meeting, uh, pumayag po ang inyong lingkod na maging co-authored po ang aking mga members, including, uh, Bokal, uh, Tres Mangkukang and Bokal Dani Red.
Members of the...
If I am not mistaken?
Members of the...
The commi, diba?
So co-authors or co-sponsors?
Sorry, co-sponsors.
Okay. So the principal author will, if ever, will be Bokal Dindin Opis. Co-author will be Bokal Ariano. And the sponsors, co-sponsors will be all members of the sponsoring committee.
Yes, Your Honor, thank you.
Tama po? Okay, so Bokal Dani Red is a member of the Committee on Social Services? Okay po. So, all the members of the Committee on Social Services are sponsoring, sponsor, sponsors, co-sponsors. Actually, ganun po 'yung magiging setup din talaga natin. Uh, the main proponent to introduce it will be the principal author. Kung papayag siya, at may nag, nagpahayag na magco-author, then nasa kanya po yon. Uh, with regard to the co-sponsorship, it will be the sponsoring committee that, uh, that will be considered as co-sponsors. And we'll request that let the, the names of all concerned board members be, be, uh, written after the title of the ordinance. Yes, so what is now the pleasure? Yes, Honorable Ariano?
So what is now the pleasure of the author? Uh, may I know if we are accepting, uh, uh, the amendments of the title?
Uh, yes, Honorable, uh, Bokal Mercy and Honorable Georgia Leva. Tinatanggap po natin ng amendment tungkol sa section one title.
So the new title?
So the new title will be... Uh, the short title will be?
Sagip Program Ordinance of 2022. Tungkol na 'yung, ano, Saklolo?
So sa, sa long title, will, will still be amended?
Ah, it will change. Meron kang short title? Okay, any other amendment? Aside from the short title introduced by Honorable Leva? There's none? What is now the pleasure? Can we, uh, can we, we're now closing the period of amendment? Sa moment, uh, pero po po pag-iba kayo, dapat mapawas o matarate pa dito ta'atin, pinong propo, uh, at in section three niyang ordinasa?
Section two, section two, may di ba magka... Instead of the province, the Provincial Government of Marinduke?
In section two?
Section two, Declaration of Parisi.
Declaration of Parisi?
Instead of the province of Marinduke, the Provincial Government of Marinduke?
The Provincial Government of...
Of Marinduke, Republikan?
The Provincial Government of Marinduke. Alsinyoong Provincial of, uh, Province of Marinduke.
So is the sponsoring committee chair and, uh, co-author is amenable to the additional amendment?
Yes po, okay po.
Any other amendment? This is something that I really appreciate not in the amendment po I, we are engaging, because this, uh, will, ano, give relief to our Secretariat who are sometimes, uh, put in a dilemma on how to interpret what we want. Any other amendment? Kung wala na po, shall we close the period of amendment? So I move po the, uh, I move to close the period of amendment?
The period of amendment is hereby closed, and what is now the pleasure of, uh, the, the sponsoring committee chair?
I hope that we approve on second reading.
I hope for, uh...
Since there's no more amendments, I move for the approval of the, uh, or proposed ordinance for the third and pa... For the second reading?
There's a motion, uh, by the, uh, Chairperson of the Committee on Social Services, Honorable Ariano, for the approval of, uh, proposed ordinance number 16 dash 14 for second reading. Is there any objection? The chair hears none. Then the proposed ordinance number 16 dash 14, "An Ordinance Establishing the Saklolo or Gabay sa Ina at Pamilya Sagip Program in the Province of Marinduke Providing for the Source of Funds and for Other Related Purposes", is now approved for second reading.
Madam Presiding Officer, following its approval for second reading, I hope that it be calendered for third and final reading in the second, in the next session.
Thank you. Thank you, and, um, may our good secretary, uh, please take note of the manika station by the Chairperson of the Committee on Rules. Yes, Honorable Leva?
The second item in the business for today is the first endorsement from the Governor, uh, requesting for authority to be given for the deed of donation of equipment, including accessories. May I ask that we recognize the Chairperson of the Committee on Health?
The gentle lady from Buak, Chairperson of the Committee on Health is recognized, Honorable Opis Mercado?
Thank you, Honorable Vice Governor. I move for the adoption and resolution, uh... For a resolution requesting that an authority be given to the Honorable Presbitero J. Velasco to enter into a deed of donation by and between the PGM and the DOHCHD Mimaropa for the equipment, including the accessories involving the amount of 4,256,210 pesos for the Marinduke Provincial Hospital. I so move, Mr. Presiding Officer.
There is a motion for the adoption of a resolution for the granting of authority to Governor Presbitero Velasco, uh, on behalf of the... On behalf of the Provincial Government of Marinduke to enter into a deed of donation with, uh, with DOHCHD Mimaropa for the equipment, including, for the donation of the equipment, including the accessories involving the amount of 4,256,210 pesos for the Marinduke Provincial Hospital. Any second to the motion? Julie, seconded by Honorable Leva, Honorable Red, Honorable Ariano, any objection? The chair hears none. Thus, the resolution granting authority to the Governor, Presbitero Velasco, to sign on behalf of the Provincial Government of Marinduke, the deed of donation with DOHCHD Mimaropa, as mentioned, is now approved.
Again, Madam Presiding Officer, may I ask that we recognize again the Chairperson of the Committee on Health for another resolution?
Yes, Honorable, uh, Dindin Opis Mercado?
Thank you. I move for the adoption and, uh, approval for a resolution requesting the Sangguneang Pandalawigan to authorize the Governor to enter into a memorandum of agreement with the DOHCHD Mimaropa for the transfer and release of funds amounting to 5 million for COVID-19 laboratory network. I so move, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Paki, pakie, uh, so we are adopting a resolution that will authorize the Governor?
Yes, yes, Honorable Vice Governor.
So there is a motion for the adoption of a resolution to authorize, uh, to authorize the Governor, Presbitero Velasco, to enter into Moa with DOHCHD Mimaropa for the transfer and release of funds amounting to 5 million pesos for COVID-19 laboratory network. Is there any ob, any second? Julie, seconded by Honorable Red, Honorable Leva, any, any objection? The chair hears none. The motion is approved, the resolution granting authority to the Governor to enter into Moa with DOHCHD Mimaropa on behalf of the province is now approved.
Madam Presiding Officer, may this representation again be recognized?
Yes, Honorable Leva?
May, uh, move for the adoption of a resolution granting authority to the Governor, Presbitero J. Velasco Jr., to make a definite tender offer and negotiate for and in behalf of the Provincial Government of Marinduke? Madam Chair, may I ask for reconsideration that this may be referred to the proper, uh, to the proper committee?
Okay, uh, after the discussion during the committee report of the other similar programs?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Yes, uh, this particular item as requested to be, is being requested to be reconsidered, and it is now being referred to the Committee on Rules.
Madam Chair, may this presentation be recognized again?
Proceed, Honorable Leva?
Madam Chair, may I ask that, I may, uh, move for, uh, adoption of a resolution granting authority to purchase a new, the Governor, Presbitero J. Velasco Jr., to purchase a new service vehicle amounting to 6 million pesos charged double against the capital outlay of the approved supplemental budget number three. I so move.
Just a query, uh, meron po bang, uh, the, the, the Presiding Officer just wish to be reminded? Para saan na po itong 6 million ito? For the use of, of, in the office of the Governor? Or in another, another offices under the office? Office of the Governor po ito, okay. Kasi naisip ko po kasi 'yung, ano, 'yung LMD peso. Uh, mamaya kasi pag inaprubahan 'yan, we will request na, 'yung kanilang pending request for the, uh, uh, request for the vehicle, for, for them to be allocated funds for the, for the new vehicle be approved na rin sana. Sige. So what is now the pleasure again?
Again, I may move for the adoption of a resolution granting authority to the Governor, Honorable Presbitero J. Velasco Jr., to purchase a new service vehicle amounting to 6 million pesos chargeable against the capital outlay of the approved supplemental budget number three. I so move.
There's a motion for the adoption of a resolution granting authority, uh, to Governor Presbitero Velasco to purchase new service vehicle amounting to 6 million, charged against the capital outlay of the approved supplemental budget number three. Any second? Julie, seconded by Honorable Mangkukang, Honorable Ariano, any objection? The chair hears none. The resolution is approved. In other matters, maybe, uh, it's now time for members of the board to, to sponsor possible, uh, uh, for the possible purchase of the needed vehicle for the Sangguneang Pandalawigan also.
Yay!
Okay, we now go to the communications and petition. May I ask that we recognize again the Chairperson of the Committee on Health?
Yes, Honorable Dindin Opis, mga palakpaganay. I move for the adoption and approval of a resolution to authorize the Governor to enter into Moa by and between the PGM, the Toriyos Municipal Hospital, and the DOHCHD Mimaropa for the utilization of medical assistance for indigent patient fund. I so move, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Is there any second to the motion of Bokal Opis Mercado? Julie, seconded by Honorable Cabalias, any objection? The chair hears none. The motion, the, the, is approved, the resolution granting authority to Governor Presbitero Velasco to enter into Moa on behalf of the province, the, on behalf of the Provincial Government of Marinduke, the Toriyos Municipal Hospital, and the DOHCHD Mimaropa for the utilization of medical assistance for indigent patient or MAIP fund is now approved.
Madam Presiding Officer, for the next item, may I ask, may I move that we convert the body into committee of the whole to consider some resource person? I so move.
The, uh, President Sangguneang is now converted into committee of the whole, so we can, uh, recognize also our resource person for a particular item. The, the body is now converted into committee of the whole.
Madam Presiding Officer, we are now in consideration of the letter from Dr. Jerica Cabalias, Provincial Health Officer, approved by the Governor requesting for the SB for an authority to enter into Moa by and between the Provincial Government of Marinduke, the Marinduke Provincial Hospital, the Santa Cruz District Hospital, Toriyos Municipal Hospital, and the Provincial Health Office with the DOHCHD Mimaropa for the transfer of funds for the health emergency allowance, sickness and death compensation, and other benefits to eligible public and private healthcare and non, her, non-healthcare workers during the COVID-19 pandemic pursuant to the implementing rules and regulations of Republic Act 11712.
Thank you, and at this juncture, we recognize the presence of our Provincial Health Officer, Dr. Cabalias. Dito na po kayo sa unahan para mas, uh, or kunsa kayo mas komportable. Ito lang po ay konting pagdidinaw tungkol po dun sa inyong, sa inyopong, uh, kahilingan. Julie, approved by the Governor with regard to the health emergency allowance. Uh, may pending query lang po kanina, including from this Presiding Officer. How much po ang involved dito po sa mawa na ito? Second po ay, sino po ang, ang specific na qualified uli? Ito lang po ay konting pagdidinaw tungkol po dun sa inyong, sa inyopong kahilingan, duly approved by the Governor with regard to the health emergency allowance. May pending query lang po kanina, including from this Presiding Officer, how much po ang involved dito po sa mawa na ito? Second po ay, sino po ang, ang specific na qualified uli? Ito po ba similar dun sa dati, kagaya last year? And last year po kasi ay may mga ilang, parang naghahabol na sila ay hindi naisama. Is it more inclusive now?
Thank you.
Ah, magandang umaga po, ano? Ganda ng tanghalian na po, ano, sa ating lahat, Honorable Vice Governor, saka the honorable members ng Sangguneang Panlalawigan. Yung pong, 'yung pinag-uusapan po ngayon, na 'yung health emergency allowance is actually, binago lang po ang pangalan 'yan, 'yung dating ukay siya eh, na hinahabol po ng provincial, provincial government, para sa mga empleyado po natin. Na deserving naman na makareceived ng allowance, pero unfortunately ay naubusan nung pundo the previous quarter, no? So, we've been successfully requesting the C-HD 4B na rectify po 'yung due na mga allowances to sa ating members, no? We took note of the issues raised by some members, especially those coming from the three hospitals operated and controlled by the Marinduke Provincial Government, na include that more, maging more inclusive 'yung allowances, no? Kasi may mga, may mga tao, and we agree on that, na medyo nawala dun sa list, pero dapat ay mga kasama, no? And some of them, for the information of everyone, are actually the frontliners noong kuwan, anong system. So, we were able to rectify that and requested, at na-approved naman po 'yan, ng C-HD 4, si Director Bakilad. So, it's the same, it's the same allowance sa binibigay po. Dun sa mga tao, na health workers, both public and private, na nagkaroon ng, ng sakit or mga namatay dahil dun sa pag respond natin sa COVID-19.
Okay po, so 'yung pong mga naghahabol noon ay ma-accommodate na po dito? Okay po. So far, 'yun lang naman po 'yung ano, gusto nating iclarify, kasi walang hinding tatanungin na naman po. And most likely po, pag po ito ay naaprubahan namin 'yung, 'yung Amowa, mga kailan po nila ito marereserve?
Actually, Madam Vice Governor, ang narilis na po 'yung, 'yung cheque for January, kasi ang, ang laki-laki nung amount na involved. So, staggered ang, ang bigay nung region, which we understand, dahil sa totoo lang, wala nang masyadong pera eh. Nag sabi naman ang totoo, 'yung DOH, na medyo nahihirapan silang ibigay, no? Sa buong health force, 'yung mga benefits due to, to us, no? At hindi lang naman po sa Marinduke ito, sa buong Pilipinas ito, including the, our region. So, though malaking bagay na rin 'yung narilisan 'yung Marinduke for January.
Balik magkano po ang matatanggap na mga?
Hindi ko, may prorated po kasi 'yan, no? Sa bawat empleyado ay may binibigay na certain amount. Actually, retroactive supposedly, ng January, at mukhang ibibigay naman. Kaya lang, honest staggered kuwan, staggered basis.
Ibig po sabi kung staggered siya or tranches siya? Ibig po sabi may mga mauuna na mabibigyan merong mga?
We are, we are requesting the region na sana, sabay-sabay, no? Hindi 'yung, noong una kasi, may, may mga naunay. May mga upisinan na hindi nakapagsubmit kaagad ng requirement, so napilitan 'yung region na, na irilis kaagad 'yung pera for the officers who complied early, no? So, pakiusap namin, para maiwasan ba 'yung kuwan, 'yung silipan, 'yung ingitan ho, isana irilis ng sabay-sabay, sa tatlong hospital at saka even dun sa aritsho. And we are, we requested, and the Regional Health Office approved, na iscentralized 'yung kuwan, 'yung collection through the PHO, 'yung collection po nung, nung data, at kami 'yung magpo-forward, para pag nag-release nung corresponding cheques, no? Na based dun sa, which is a subject na sa availability ng funds, is sabay-sabay na makakatanggap lahat, no? At 'yung nga, na January eh, narilis na.
Okay po. So, mayroon pa po bang ibang katanungan o paglidinaw mula sa kapulungan? Kung wala na, marami pong salamat. Actually, 'yun lang po, we just became sensitive dun po sa mga, mga ano, mga ilang mga naghahabol noon, so we just want to make sure na they're already included in the would-be beneficiaries of this. So, salamat po, mayroon pa po ba kayong gustong iparating? Kami po ay kakain ng masarap na tanghalian mamaya po eh, courtesy ng, ng Senior Board Member.
Balita ko nga, Madam Chair.
Sige, kaya po, yeah, kaya po kahit bumabagyo, talaga ako sinigurado po naming andito po rin kami, dahil baka pumapanis daw ang, sige, marami salamat, Doctor. Mayroon pa bang, yes, Honorable Leva?
Tukulang dun sa, baka, baka alam ni Doctor Cabalias, kasi tungkol dun nila naman ito sa DOH, 'yung MAIP, kasi nabigyan na namin 'yung Toriyos Municipal Hospital, 'yung Marinduke Provincial Hospital. Ay, baka naman humingi sa amin 'yung sa Santa Cruz District Hospital, wala pang nahiingi. Ay, parang di ba, hanggang November 30 lang? Lahat ba ng hospital ay may MAIP?
Actually, sir, lahat ng hospital is meron, no? As a matter of fact, the most efficient, if I may say, na mag-disburse ng, ng funds sa MAIP is Santa Cruz District, no?
Baka naman kaya wala sila nun?
Meron ho, nagkagastos lang ng mabilis ni Doctor kuwan, ni Doctor, ah, sag dito, Arli Virtusio.
Ano po kaya kung bigyan na rin natin ng authority si Governor para sa Santa Cruz District Hospital?
I think meron na hong kuwan 'yan, ang, ang MAIP kasi ng, ng Santa Cruz as I, if I recall right, no, ay direct na hong nagagaling sa DOH. So, DOH ang nagbababa ng pundo sa, sa Santa Cruz.
Santa Cruz, iba ang ano lang?
Arrangement.
Arrangement.
Okay.
Salamat po for the information.
Or if you want to be, ano, para hindi na, Madam, we can include?
Yes, oh.
If, if ever also, just in case it will be applicable. So, marami pong salamat, Doctor Cabalias, and pasensya po sa bigla-bigla ang pagpapatawag without letter. Thank you very much po for accommodating the urgent request.
Okay, ma'am. Thank you all.
Yes, Honorable Leva?
Madam Presiding Officer, may I move that we revert back to the original form of the Sangguneang Panlalawigan?
The August body is now reverted back to the regular session.
Madam Presiding Officer, may I ask that be recognized the chairperson of the Committee on Health for the sponsorship of another measure?
Yes, Honorable Dinden Office Mercado, the lady of the day. Thank you. I move for the adoption and approval of a resolution requesting the SB for authority to enter into Amowa by and between the PGM and PH Santa Cruz District Hospital?
Requesting authorizing the Governor?
Authorizing the Governor to enter into Amowa by and between the PGM and PH Santa Cruz District Hospital, Toriyos Municipal Hospital, and the Provincial Health Office with the DOHCHD Mima Ropa for the transfer of funds for the health emergency allowance, sickness and death compensation, and other benefits to eligible public and private healthcare and non-healthcare workers during the COVID-19 pandemic pursuant to implementing rules and regulations of Republic Act Number 11712. I so move, Mr. Presiding Officer.
There is a motion by Bokal Dinden Office Mercado, duly seconded by Honorable Leva, Honorable Red, Honorable Rehano. Any objection? The Chair hears none. The, the motion is approved. The resolution granting authority to the Governor to enter into memorandum of agreement by and between the Provincial Government of Marinduke, Marinduke Provincial Hospital, Santa Cruz District Hospital, Toriyos Municipal Hospital, and Provincial Health Office with the DOHCHD Mima Ropa for the transfer of funds for the health emergency allowance, sickness and death compensation, and other benefits to eligible public and private healthcare and non-healthcare workers during the COVID-19 pandemic pursuant to implementing rules and regulations of RA 11712 is now approved.
Madam Chair, may I ask that be recognized the chairperson of the Committee on Peace and Order and Public Safety?
I thought there will be a reconsideration to include Santa Cruz already on the other?
Ah, Madam Chair, in reconsideration of the item when we originally adopted, may we?
For the MAIP?
For the MAIP, may we include Santa Cruz District Hospital?
Is that okay for the Chairman of the Committee on Health? So, just please take note that part of the essence of the resolution granting authority to the Governor to enter into Amowa with regard to the MAIP fund will cover also Santa Cruz. Santa Cruz District Hospital.
Again, Madam Chair, may I ask that be recognized the chairperson of the Committee on Peace and Order and Public Safety?
Yes, Honorable Cabalias is recognized.
Thank you po, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, this representation formally moves for the adoption of a resolution implementing the PNP revitalized kasimbayanan or kapulisan simbahan at pamayanan in the province of Marinduke, Madam Chair.
There's a motion by the Chair of the Committee on Peace and Order, Honorable Cabalias, and second to the motion, to that motion, duly seconded by Honorable Leva, Honorable Butch Rosales, Honorable Mayor C. Rehano. Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. The resolution adopting the implementation of PNP revitalized kasimbayanan program in the province of Marinduke is now approved.
Madam Presiding Officer, may I ask that be recognized the chairperson of the Committee on Human Resources for the sponsorship of a proposed measure?
The Honorable Gentleman from Toriyos, from Santa Cruz, Honorable Butch Rosales is recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I formally move a proposal, for approval of a proposal, Resolution Number 2022, Dasa 77, resolution na congratulating Ms. Iana May Sorosa of Gason, Marinduke for being a regional awardee in the Young Farmers Challenge 2022 of the Department of Agriculture and expressing the Province's appreciation and commendation for the promoting agriculture as a rewarding endeavor among the younger generations, Madam Chair.
There is a motion from the sponsoring committee chair, Honorable Butch Rehano, duly seconded by Honorable Rehano, nag nagutom na. Any objection? The Chair hears none. The resolution congratulating Ms. Iana May Sorosa of Gason, Marinduke for being a regional awardee in the Young Farmers Challenge 2022 of the Department of Agriculture is now approved.
And additional, Madam Chair, may we request Ms. Iana May Sorosa of Gason, next session, for the, ano nung resolution?
Upon require, the presence, for the personal handover of the resolution?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay, requesting our Secretariat to please assist us on that, and we expect Ms. Iana May during the matters arising.
Madam Chair, may this representation, as Chairperson of the Committee on Human Resource Labor Employment be recognized?
Proceed, Honorable Leva.
Madam Chair, may I ask for the, I may I move for the adoption of a resolution congratulating and commending the Provincial Government of Marinduke's livelihood, manpower development, and public service office under the leadership of Ms. Almasi Timtiman for garnering the 2022 Department of Labor Employment by an Ihan Service Award for third and to fifth class provincial category, and for winning the second place of the choice of the press award during the 22nd National Press Congress held in Clark, Pampanga. during the 22nd National Press Congress held in Clark-Pampanga on October 25, 2022. I so move.
There is a motion by the by Honorable Leva. Any second to that motion? Duly seconded by Honorable Cabalias. Any objection? The Chair hears none. Thus, resolution congratulating and commending the Provincial Government of Marinduke's Livelihood, Manpower Development and Public Service Office or LMD Peso under the leadership of Miss Alma C. Timtiman for garnering the 2022 Department of Labor and Employment Bayanihan Service Award for the third and fifth class provincial category and for winning the second place of choice of the press award during the 22nd National Press Congress held in Clark-Pampanga on October 25, 2022 is now approved.
Madam Chair, likewise, we would like to see in person Miss Alma Timtiman. So we would like to request that Miss Alma Timtiman and the rest of the LMD Peso staff be invited in the next session.
Requesting also the Secretariat to make the necessary communication to Mam Alma Timtiman and maybe the the good gentleman, Honorable Leva, hand in hand with Honorable Cabalias can be generous enough to sponsor also the appropriation for the vehicle of LMD Peso. Kasi po isa po ako sa madalas nilang hinihiraman ng sasakyan. Kapag may mga bisita from civil service na mga programs nila, which is the reason why they were awardee. They are they are awardee because of the many programs implemented in the province. Pero para po sila minsang mga pulubi na nanghihiram ng sasakyan, kahit na private vehicle, Bokal Butch Rosales is also being requested by LMD Peso kapag may mga bisita from civil service, kapag may mga ah 'yung mga programs mula sa national government na dinadala nila dito, including 'yung, anong tawag dito? 'Yung ah employment ah...
Dolitopan?
Hindi po. 'Yung nag...
'Yung ano, 'yung ano, 'yung...
Ano 'yan? Job fairs, pagse-sending off ng kanilang mga beneficiaries. These are the reasons why they they were awardees or we are awardees. Yet sila po 'yung nakikita kong parang kawawa kapag may ini-implement na program. Even private vehicle, hinihiram nila. Kaya po, maybe it's now time na hand in hand with the recognition, it will be inspiring for them. If we give them ano, a hope that sooner or later, they will have an official vehicle.
Madam Chair, ah what you have said is an incidental, ay I move for an incidental motion? May we approve an appropriation of 1.5 million for the purchase of vehicle of the LMD Peso with the approval of the Chairperson of the Committee on Appropriation?
Yes, what eh ah...
And also authorizing the same to purchase the said vehicle? Para isang ano na lang?
To be included in the next supplemental budget?
Yes. But ah is that ah... May I move to the Chairperson of the Committee on Appropriation?
May we hear the sent, may we hear from the Chairperson of the Committee on Appropriation if he is amenable to sponsor also the said resolution?
Ah yes, Madam Chair, I would just like to clarify if, dahil postumarily, 3 million po'y nahingi ng mga offices pag vehicle purchase. Kung 1.5 lang po 'yung ah specific request ng LMD Peso ay...
So 3 million na?
Ah ano ba, ano ba gansabi? May sinabi sila...
Sige, gawa ng 3 million? Kasi sila ano 'yan, mga 2 million?
2 million. 2 million lang?
2 million. 2 million.
Okay.
Yes po, Madam Chair.
So can the the incidental motion be reiterated once more?
Ah the incidental motion, ah Madam Presiding Officer, I move for adoption of a resolution appropriating amount of 2 million pesos for the purchase of the service vehicle of the LMD Peso and authorizing the same to purchase a new vehicle ah of the same amount chargeable against any available fund.
Is there any second to the motion? Duly seconded by everybody, ah the the mo, the resolution approving the appropriation of 2 million pesos for the purchase of vehicle for LMD Peso and authorizing further the purchase thereof ah chargeable to available funds is now approved. They will be happy next to...
Madam Presiding Officer, may I ask for the recognition of the Chairperson of the Committee on Appropriation for the accompanying report of Committee Report Number, accompanying resolution of Committee Report Number 54 Series of 2022?
Yes, Honorable Cabalias is recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ah Madam Chair, with your indulgence, I would just like to read ah the resolutions as amended, just ah so that to avoid any confusion.
Proceed, Honorable Cabalias.
Thank you po, Madam Chair. Ah Madam Chair, ah its representation would like to move for the adoption of a resolution appropriating the amount of 15,591,000 pesos intended for the purchase of lots with a capital expansion with the total, with the total land area of 31,902 square meters equivalent to 500 pesos per square meter. Number two...
Ah can we approve it one by one?
Ah yes.
Okay. So there is um, or you want to make a ano, an omnibus motion? Okay. Proceed, Honorable Cabalias.
Ah thank you po, Madam Chair. And number two, for the adoption of a resolution appropriating the amount of 14, 1.4 million pesos equivalent to 15% of the originally requested amount ah...
1.4?
1.4. We allow the legal team to initiate expropriation proceedings for the airport expansion with a total land area of 50,092 square meters equivalent to 500 square, 500 per square meter.
So it's no longer 9 million? It's just 1.4 million?
Chargeable against the 20% development fund. And number three, to adopt a resolution appropriating the amount of 17 million for the creation of a master plan for the province of Marinduke subject to availability of funds, Madam Chair.
Okay. There is a motion by the by Honorable Cabalias, Chair of the Committee on Appropriation, for the adoption of three resolutions as read. Is there any second? Duly seconded by Honorable Leva, Honorable Mangol, Honorable Rehano, Honorable Red. Any objection? The Chair hears none. Thus, the omnibus motion for the approval of a resolution granting supplemental appropriation in the amount of 15,591,000 for the purchase of lots, for the provincial capital expansion, as well as resolution approving the appropriation of 1.4 million pesos chargeable against the 20% development fund for the purchase of lots for the ex-airport expansion and a resolution approving the appropriation of 17 million for the creation of master plan for the province of Marinduke subject to availability of funds is now approved.
That closes the business reporting portion of today's session. We don't have any other side business. We don't have any proposed ordinance and resolution for third and final reading. Ah Madam Chair, since no more matters to to discuss with, I move that we adjourn until next Friday, November 4.
Okay.
I so move.
The the session is adjourned until November 4 at 10 o'clock in the morning.